The National Planning Board is open for conducting of business February 25th. I recognize a quorum of board members. First of all, the business is approved by minutes. Minutes of the district submitted by the planning director. All members should receive those and at times look at those. I'll now entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
Harper motion, Macklinsky approved as written.
Ms. Lewis has made a motion for approval second.
I'll second that.
Mr. Harper has approved all in favor of the motion. Motion's passed unanimously.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, sir. Thank you both for coming out to see me. Just as a brief announcement to the board, I think we were all aware of this, but Ms. Ann Collier, who's been a dedicated member for the planning board for several years during my tenure in Nashville, did send her formal resignation on Friday. Of course, we all knew that Ann was moving out of the town limits. So this is why she had to resign. And she wished the board well and told me that she'll be stopping by to see him sometime in town if she gets some time to get to a meeting, Mr. Chairman. So she did send her wishes, but we thank Ann and Ms. Collier for what she done on the Nashville Planning Board, sir. So we do have a vacancy and we have had some advocates submit in for that vacancy to join planning board, sir. Now, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I will move to actually I have number three for you, sir. That is the rezoning of 1520 Oak Level Road and 4.76 acres of parcel 346858 from agricultural one to business one. If you look in your packets, we'll start with the application and the owner of the property has sent a representative to represent him, Mr. Kevin Bardell from Stocks Engineering. But it was submitted on January 17, 2025. It is for the existing land uses A1 is where our station number two is located, being built now, located, being built right now. The adjacent property is right beside it and they're asking to have a rezoning from B1. The advocate did make a good definition and clarification of why he wanted rezoned to B1. Describe the rezoning request as consistent with the Town Nashville Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance. The B1 zone is consistent with the use and the recent rezoning of the Dollar General, which is down the street that has been rezoned. The zoning that will be needed and need to be amended for number two. Explain why the rezoning request would be appropriate, beneficial to the general public's interest of the area sought to be rezoned. The B1 zone is consistent with the use and the recent rezoning of the Dollar General down the street, same thing. Explain whether the rezoning request would be adversely affected by joining property owners and alter the character of the area. Propose use matches the existing use of the fire station. Briefly explain the accessibility and the impact of adequate public facilities, service, fire and safety, infrastructure, parks and recreation, stormwater drainage, topography, et cetera, that is currently available at the subject property. This property has got sewer and water and it is available. And both these applications were submitted on January 17 for the rezoning. If you look in your packet on page one, this is rezoning case 2002502. The advocate is three-yearmar limited partnership. As we stated earlier, he has Kevin Bardell from Stocks Engineering to represent him. They're asking rezoning this parcel and the parcel adjacent beside it from A1 to B1. He's hired Kevin Bardell to do this. North of the property is R10, which is the Woodfield subdivision right across the street. South of the property is B1, which is businesses. And also that southeast is also the neighborhood just right behind the dish that was just built, the Bradford Place subdivision. East is A1 vacant land, a telephone hill that's to the left heading back towards Nashville. West heading out of Nashville is A1, B1 farmland, and then of course the Dollar General that we rezoned about two years ago to B1. Existing zoning A1 agriculture one, the district is defined as one for by land for future development while permitting continued agricultural use until such time that development is appropriate. It assumes the approved wells and septic tanks will be utilized until such time as municipal water and sewer is not available. District situated primary in the town's ETJ. They're asking for B1. The B1 zone district is defined as a certain commercial area which provides a wide selection of convenience and comparison shopping centers, furniture showrooms, and for personal service and orderly arrangement of retail facilities, parking, and other manages. This district is consumer located at the intersection of one or more highways or along thoroughways. The district also provides retailing and personal services for the benefit of residents in nearby areas and non-residents. Also included with certain funds such as warehousing and compatible with primary use. Our comp plan states this laying these two parcels be zoned as highway services and our future land use. Our highway services pretty much defined as commercial or communication uses and tend to be located at a town's interchange within US 64. These uses are primarily automobile oriented and generally either functioning as stop for travelers, fast food, restaurants, gas station, hotels, or functions as regional shopping destination, big box retail home service. Special option retail service shall be allowed when designed in conjunction with and/or located within shopping centers. Prefer use of highway services, retail, professional services, restaurants, offices, and hotels. If you look at our B1 zoning district, we have a lot of items that are permitted uses, special use permits in the B1. For the sake of time, we won't list them all, but we'll just go through the vast majority of them. Museum meeting facility, conference center, place of worship, theater indoors permitted, theater outdoors, special use permit. You have sports schools, performing arts schools, sports recreation vocation, convenience stores, a library, elementary, middle, high schools, ABC stores, microbreweries, training, research facilities, a hospital, vet clinic, vet hospital, building trade contracts office, golf course, paintball, aerosol, park wreck facilities indoor and outdoor, racetrack is a special use, health personal care, bodyarts, car wash, eating and drinking establishments, garden center, kennels, short-term rooms to not host, occupied, telecommunications facilities, co-hosts, occupied, elevated water storage tank, solar facilities, utilities, public major, wholesale trade uses. So you see our B1 is kind of our vast majority where we allow more of our business industrial side businesses in the town, more of our retail establishments in the town. The subject property is 4.5 acres of land owned by a three-yearmar limited partnership. It has road front off Oak Level Road in Nashville, primarily in the A1 zoning district within the town of Nashville. Current Town Nashville Fire Station Two is on the property. The property falls in the Town Nashville zoning jurisdiction limits. The other parcel is 4.76 acres of tract undeveloped land owned by three-yearmar limited partnership with road fronts off Oak Level Road in Nashville and our A1 zoning district in the ETJ. If you look at your page number three, you see a comparison of the properties, both properties are A1. The 1520 is where the station number two is being built. The one beside it is a vacant lot that was pretty much cut out when they subdivide it. If you look at page number four, our future land use map has this slated as medium density residential and low density residential. The low density is exactly where our fire station is being built. The medium density is the parcel that was cut out. And our project history starts off with Kevin Bardell from Stocks Engineering submitting this application on behalf of the owner. 1520 Oak Level Road is currently housing Town Nashville Fire Station Number Two. Property is being served by Town Ward and Town Sewer by the Town of Nashville. A public notice letter went out to 84 property owners within a 750, 750-foot radius on February the 5th. We also do have the declaration, we'll jump ahead, stating that we did mail this out to the property owners. The public notice was posted on the town website on February the 5th. Rezoning sign was posted on the property February the 4th. Votes were taken place, taken with the property being rezoned. That's at the end of your packet. Legal notice and advertising is in the grab on February the 13th, 20th, and 27th, 2025 for the planning board meeting, also we advertise for our town council meeting. The front door was closed on February the 5th. The front door in Town Nashville was posted on February the 5th. The subject property is not located within the flood plain. The subject property is located in the Stony Creek Tar Room Reservoir, Tar Room Watershed, and the subject property is located in the Upper Stony Creek Lower Saviny Creek Subwatershed. The subject property is not located in the NCDQ Watershed District. Town Nashville Future Land Use Map has existing property as low density and medium density. Reasonableness and spot zoning. General rezoning request, RZ 202502, may be considered reasonable and in the position because, one, request is not spot zoning because such property will be rezoned for agricultural use and development for commercial use. Two, our future land use map has this property slated for development of such, which is being designated as lower and medium density residential. If the planning board designate this use as B1, it will be going against our future land use map recommendations, but by allowing this, you will be given the opportunity for future business growth along the Oak Level Road corridors. Town Nashville B1 zoning district is our most intensive for these types of uses and the subject property does have, is in harmony with use requests since the property has road front off Oak Level Road. As the planning board is not, you are asked to make these four recommendations. I think all y'all have read those of what you would do, your duties tonight. Our TRC recommendations, the TRC team did not meet on this rezoning. We will be meeting on this one if there is development on Lot Two. Of course, we did meet for the fire station being built, but if there is any type of development on Lot Two, we will meet. Mr. Chairman, I will yield at this time to you to open up the public hearing. As I stated before, Mr. Kevin Bardell is here to represent the applicant from Stocks Engineering. So I will yield at this time to you to open up the public hearing and hear from Mr. Bardell, sir.
Thank you, sir. I declare a public hearing on this matter, 1520 Oak Level Road. Public, I have nobody signed up. Is anybody here to speak on 1520 Oak Level Road rezoning proposal? I'm being seen, Mr. Bardell.
Mr. Chairman, Kevin Bardell with Stocks Engineering representing the developer and the current owner of the property. Again, slight shout out to him. This is the existing fire station property that is under construction already, just really trying to make the zoning fit the current use of the site there. And then obviously the adjacent parcel next door that is residual of the split off where we did the subdivision for the fire station. So the original property was nine acres. We split it into two roughly four and a half acre pieces with the left side being the fire station and the right side being vacant. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
I don't think the board has any questions, thank you. Anybody else to speak on this matter? The public hearing on this matter is closed. Sean.
Mr. Chairman, tonight we have two recommendations. My recommendation for this one be since the developer has met the requirements for rezoning and such property has proven that it would not be classified as spot zoning map amendment. I will recommend approval of this rezoning from A1 agriculture one to B1 business one since the Town Nashville Future Land Use Map has the property slated for low, medium density. Well, we'll be voting against our future land use map recommendations, but allowing these changes to the zoning atlas, we are granting future opportunity to allow business alone to Oak Level Road corridor, sir. And we have the suggested motions for the board now. You bet you for deliberation, Mr. Board Member, sir.
Thank you, sir. Recommendation staff is RZ 202502 be approved. It's a pleasure of the board.
Look that it be approved.
Mr. Thomas made a motion for approval to have a second.
I made a second.
Mr. Harper's made a second. The motion is, as it written, I want to go through all the things. The motion recommend approval of zoning map amendment. And as I move that Town Nashville Planning Board recommends approval of zoning request, RZ 2025, rezoning a specific property, B1, B1 business one, allow any use of the B1 zoning district, law and state of the plant assistance, see in writtenness, recommended considerations at the town council. Is that motion as you make?
Yes.
All in favor say aye. All opposed, pass or no pass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now have another rezoning for the planning board tonight. This is conditional rezoning, RCZD 200501, the conditional rezoning request of 11 acres out of a 33-acre tract off of South Side Drive from A1 to RCZD Residential Conditional Zone District. If you look at your application, Mr. Chairman, the property address is off South Side Drive. There is not a address or parcel number assigned to it yet due to the subdivision taking place right now with the town and the county reviewing everything that will be submitted in the next couple of weeks. The parcel number of the entire property is 005281. It is vacant. The proposed land use, the existing land use is A1, as we stated, the proposed land use is RCZD. Proposed land use will be for multifamily housing. The advocate is Carolina Statewide Development LLC out of Jacksonville, North Carolina. The advocate has took in the necessities to make sure to answer the questions for our rezoning, describe how the rezoning request is consistent with the Town Nashville Comprehensive Plan, zoning orders, and other official plans that's applicable. Proposed rezoning request to multifamily CZRD is consistent with the future land use plan, which identifies this property as high-density residential. Explain how the rezoning request will update the existing ordinance. If there's any inconsistencies with the Town Nashville Comprehensive Plan zoning orders or any other official plan that's applicable, proposed request would rezon the property to CZRD, RCZD, but it will not be inconsistent with the land use plan of the zoning ordinance. Explain why the rezoning request would be appropriate, beneficial, and in the general public's interest of the area sought to be rezoned. The Town Nashville needs more housing options that are affordable to town employees, teachers, and singles. With the current housing market, most of the new homes being built are not affordable to the local public service or single-income households. Explain whether the rezoning request would adversely affect the joint property owners and alter the character of the area. The proposed request is consistent with the future land use plan, which took into account the character of the local neighborhood and determined that high-density would be in harmony with the neighborhood. The current Town Nashville street design can accommodate a significant amount of traffic and certainly the minimal amount that will be produced by this development. Briefly explained accessibility and impact aquatic, aquatic public facilities, services, fire and safety, infrastructure, parks and recreation, stormwater drainage, and topography, et cetera, that is currently available at the subject property. The number of units proposed for this proposed project will not place any undue burden on public service, emergency response, infrastructure, parks, or drainage. The current plan proposes five hydrants and a playground and community spaces. Stormwater will be treated on-site in facilities placed to reduce the post-development runoff to equal pre-development conditions. Mr. Chairman, this was submitted by the applicant and his team, Carolina Statewide Development. If you look in your packet on page one, this is RZ 2005 RCZD02. I propose 11 acres off South Side Drive to be rezoned to Residential Conditional Zone District. Mark Makowski with East Point Homes has requested 11 acres of the 34-acre tract be rezoned to Conditional Zone District Residential off South Side Drive, which is in the Town Nashville ETJ limits. The advocate is asking for the property be conditionally rezoned from A1 agriculture to CZDR for better use of the builder's use. The advocate has hired Mr. Kevin Bardell with Stocks Engineering to represent his firm for the rezoning request. As we stated earlier, there is not a parcel number for the 11 acres yet because we're in the process now of them subdivided and submitting the subdivision to the town for review. But if you look at the zoning land use, what a conditional nature this rezoning request allows for reasonable site suspended development conditions with the consent of the applicant. If you look at the zoning land use, north of the property is A1 agricultural farmland. South is R10 residential single-family dwellers that's south Break Street. East is A1 agricultural farmland and west is A1 ML vacant land. If you're heading towards Glover Park, then the ML is where you cross over into the Cardinal Woods subdivision. Does this sound A1? I think we defined A1 in the previous rezoning years, so I don't think we need clarification to redefine what A1 is to the planning board. But CZDR Residential Conditional Zone District is defined as zone district with suspended permit use and detail within the ordinance authorized by North Carolina General Statute 160D 703. Disposition of the neutrality agreed upon individual development conditions allowed is part of legislative rezoning process. Is provided for unified residence development that accomplishes the purpose of applicable relegations to equivalent or higher degree that where certain regulations are intended to control development of individual lots and promote economical and effective land use, improved levels of amenity, appropriate and harmless variety, creative design, and a better environment. This district shall be located in such manner as to be compatible with the characters of existing development of surrounding properties, thus ensuring the continued conversation of building values and encouraging the most appropriate use of the land. If you look at our Nashville Comp Plan, the 2021 Comp Plan, the property is slated as high-density residential. Our Comp Plan states high-density residential to nine to 13 dwelling units per acre. Resident use includes single-family subdivisions, townhomes, multifamily development. Contextual residential serving uses shall be allowed if they match the context of existing resident development. Our Comp Plan refers to prefer use in this type of zoning, small lots, single-family detached homes, single-family attached homes, townhomes, and multifamily. Considerations that we should as the planning board and the town look at when we're doing these type of rezonings. Parking should be hidden from the right away to distinct possible to mitigate its visual impact. Promote rooftop amenities for multifamily developers for additional managed space. Workforce houses should be encouraged to provide expanded housing opportunities when possible. Consider visual transition of residence use to ensure a contextual greater use. Stone brick and similar material should be used. If we go down to the description of such property, as we stated, such property is 11 acres off South Side Drive. We have a picture for you in your packet of where it dead ends at. They will be picking up there and sending that out onto the track. If you turn over to page number three in your packet, you will see an arrow point of where we're looking at cutting that 11 acres out to do that development. If you look under at the future land use map, it has this slated as high-density residential. If you turn over to page number four, the project history, and we'll reiterate this again, East Point LLC is the advocate requesting rezoning. A total of 11 acres of the above said location. Rezoning application received on February 14, 2025. Public hearing notice of removal mailed out to approximately 78 property owners within a 500-foot radius on February the 5th, 2025. We will jump out of our packet and jump to the end, your certification and notice of property owners. We did sign that letting you know that on this day, we did mail out those seven of those property letters for the public hearing to the 78 people. Notice was posted on the town website on February the 7th. The rezoning sign was posted on the property February the 5th. Votes were taken. Please see below at the end of the packet. Living notice was advertised in the grab on the 13th, 20th, 27th of February for the planning board meeting and scheduled for our town council meeting on March 4th on February 25th. Meaning the planning board does reach a decision tonight for or against the rezoning of this property. Front door townhouse was posted on February the 5th. Front door out here, the Cooley Library was posted on February the 7th. Subject property is not located within the flood plain. Subject property is located in the WS4 NSW Watershed District. Under current Watershed Potential Order standards that says the amount of impervious surface allowed in this protected area for non-residential projects is 36, no curb and gutter, 24% if curb and gutter is used. The subject property is located in Tar Room Reservoir, Tar Room Watershed, Lower Sappan Creek Subwatershed. The property can be provided with water and sewer through the Town of Nashville. The Town Nashville 2021 Comprehensive Land Use Plan has property stated for high-density residential. The Nash County Land Development Plan adopted in 2022 has property stated for municipal growth. If you look at your next picture, that is off the NCDQ Watershed, showing that this property is in the watershed. Our next photo is just a GIS photo. Our next one is just showing the zoning planning areas in the town of A1. We have a Google Earth photo and we also have pictures of the property. If you turn to page number six in your packet, we've been over what the planning board is asked to do tonight, we'll make recommendations, review. I think the planning board knows their duties tonight. Description of rezoning request, we've been over what they're asking for, the left dates to be rezoned to Residential Conditional Zone District. Approved the rezoning request will have substantial impacts on the subject property. Requirement on the lot area will be reduced from 50 square feet with central water and sewer to R6 6,000 square feet. There are more than 34 different land use that are permitted for development under certain circumstances in the current A1 zoning district. This will no longer be permitted for development under the proposed Residential Conditional Zone District, but not limited to single-family homes, two-family homes, multifamily, single-family attached townhomes, apartments, and condominiums. Consistent with the comp land use plan, our comp land use plan says that, one, it's consistent the proposed zoning request is in harmony with existing and surrounding neighborhoods. Number two, the Town Nashville Comprehensive Plan is slated this designated area for future growth, slated as a high-density area. Number three, the subject property has road front direct access off of South Side Drive, which is in the Town Nashville maintained road. Reasonableness and spot zoning. Conditional rezoning requests are CZD 200502 may be considered reasonable in the public's interest and not spot zoning because certain properties located within a residential district and will continue to be zoned for residential use similar to the adjacent properties around it. The Town Nashville Definition of CZRZD Zone District is provided for unified residential development, which may include residential components that accomplish the purpose of applicable relegations to equivalent higher degrees than where certain relegations are intended to control development or on individual lots and to promote economical, effective land use, improved levels of amenity, appropriate harmless variety of creative designs, and better environment. Mr. Chairman, as we stated earlier, the TRC team did not meet on this because we have not had any plans submitted about this rezoning request right now we have before us. We do provide some development conditions that the applicant and the team, his team will have to agree to before this rezoning goes in effect, if it is passed by the planning board or town council, who have to agree with this. Subject property shall be developed in accordance to the approved site plant applicable requirements of Town Nashville Zone Orders and additional standard for section M number nine. That's what our zoning order, so they have to pretty much build it to our zoning order we're asking for. Subject property may be developed for the land use permitted in the R6 High Density Residential District and according with the standard requirements and proposed procedures established for this district by the Town Nashville Zone Ordinance. Project construction proposed site developed shall obtain the following additional permits: Town Nashville zoning permit, commercial building permits, and commercial trade permits provided by Nash County, a Town Nashville driveway permit, and any other applicable permits that may be required for this site development with approval of the Nash County Planning and Building Inspection Department also. Development must use a recommended type of buffer screen recommended by the Town Nashville Zone Orders for requested use. So we want to put a buffer screen up around the property to protect the existing neighborhood around it. Significant substantial modification revision to the approved design of site plan may require additional review by the Town Nashville Technical Review Committee, the Town Nashville Planning Board, as well as reapproved by the Town Nashville Town Council at discretion of the planning director's designated need. The Conditional Zone Map Amendment shall be in violation unless all, until all practitioners consent and writing to the attached development conditions that we are proposing tonight. So as we stated before, even if we vote, the town council votes to approve this, it does not go in effect till his team signs and they agree to the Town Nashville Development Conditions, Conditional Rezoning. As we stated earlier, sir, the planning board knows their duties, what they have to do about making recommendations with this right here. And Mr. Chairman, I will yield now to you, sir. We do have some things in your packet that we would like to show that out in your package as we received them today, but we'll be glad to share with you. We have two letters of recommendation from different towns and jurisdictions for this. The first one is from the town of Aiden and it's from the mayor, Ivory Meborn. In 2016, the town of Aiden approved the development of 64-unit multifamily complex called Arbor's Park, which was developed by Carolina Statewide East Point Homes. The community has been welcome addition and is an asset to our town by way of providing additional housing options for residents. The buildings within Arbor's Park are attractive and include a variety of amenities in the community building for the residents. It has been my observation that the property is well-maintained and professionally managed. In October 2022, the town commission approved a rezoning for eight parcels directly adjacent to the Arbor's Park to allow for another multifamily development consisting of 80 units with a combination of one, two, and three bedroom apartments. We are psyched that this development is underway with construction schedule beginning within the next few months. The communities are adjacent to a single-family neighborhood along with duplexes and other multifamily developments and will have no, no complaints from their neighbors. Development and construction team did a fantastic job with Arbor's Park and we look forward to the completion of second phase. We'll provide much more workforce housing for our community. We highly recommend them to work in your community as they do what they say they want to do and build a very high-quality attractive product. If you have any questions, please reach out. Mayor Ivory Meborn, the town of Aiden. We also have another letter of support from Mayor Sammy Phillips from the city of Jacksonville, and he sent this to Mayor Brenda Brown and to the town members. Recommendation for East Point Homes, dear Mayor Brown, please accept this letter as my recommendation for East Point Homes. I have known James Madison for many years and I have worked with him over the past 20 years. East Point Homes has developed three multifamily house development comprised of a total of 280 units in the city of Jacksonville. They are currently in the process of developing a fourth project to provide additional affordable housing for our citizens in addition to overall development. Mr. Madison's team has continued to manage and maintain these properties from the beginning. The city was well, was pleased with each of these developments and East Point's home has continued to serve our community and represent a true asset to the city of Jacksonville. Without this partnership, our community would not be able to provide quality house opportunity to our citizens. We would highly recommend another public agency to work with Mr. Madison and East Point Homes on developing this nature. Mr. Madison has a great track record with the city of Jacksonville and produces high-quality work. Please feel free to contact me if you would like to further discuss with any of my experience with East Point Homes and Mr. James Madison. Sincerely, Sammy Phillips, the mayor of the city of Jacksonville. Mr. Chairman, we will now yield to the team of East Point's Home. They have Mr. Kevin Bardell here to represent them, and I believe they also have a few things that they would like to discuss with the board. So I will yield back to you, sir, to open up the public hearing, to hear from the public, to hear from Mr. Bardell and the team of East Point's Homes, sir.
Thank you. Now, open up the public hearing, CZDR 202502. We have eight people who come from the public who wishes to be heard on this. I'm going to ask Mr. Bardell to come up first and do his presentation. That way our citizens can know what's being talked about so they can ask their questions. what's being talked about so they can ask their questions. Mister Barnell, can we lead off, please?
Mister Chairman, thank you. Again, my name is Kevin Barnell with Stockton Engineering, representing the applicant and developer for the project. They're also here tonight and they'll give a small presentation with a few more visual aspects of what I've done with this. But I'm going to run through it real quick. As Sean said, the request is to rezon approximately eleven acres from the town's base zoning of A one to the residential conditional zoning district. The paint attracts approximately thirty two acres and currently has one access to public right of way from South Side Drive. The development currently proposes seventy two tax credit apartment units. This is not section eight or HUD housing projects. Tax credit departments are regulated by the North Carolina Housing Finance and essentially offer tax credits to developers who are willing to cap the rent to provide workforce housing. The renters must have income, pass a background check, and have good credit, no different than any other conventional apartment. The difference is that development provides a place where single public servants like teachers, public utility workers, firefighters, and police officers can afford to live in a safe, well-managed facility with multiple amenities. Traffic for the property, the property currently has one access to both right of way off of South Side Drive. The development will also stub to adjacent properties to provide additional future connections as well. The tenth edition of the International Traffic Engineers, the I T manual, shows that three story apartments produce approximately four trips per day per unit and for our site would be roughly two hundred and eighty eight trips per day. Assuming seventy five percent of the trips happen within the peak A M and P M hours, that's one car roughly every two minutes. Certainly not a major traffic generator and well within the current level of service of a two lane road that can handle four thousand trips per day. The recommendation for requiring a traffic study is when a new development adds a thousand trips a day or more. And even with Richardson Court and all the single family on Break Street, the total traffic would still be less than a thousand trips per day. With seventy two units proposed, there will be children. However, the numbers are far less in apartments than you would see in single family homes where the average is roughly two children per home. With the one and two bedroom apartment mix, many of these will have no children. And the number of children that could result from this development would not make a major impact on our school systems. In regards to emergency services, the design of the site provides required fire access for fire and E M S response. It will install fire hydrants and sprinkler system for fire protection. Before unit design begins, multiple engineering studies will be conducted and the findings reviewed by the corresponding state agencies. We will locate all the weapons, streams, collect geotechnical data, and endangered species searches. Again, all the findings must be concurred with by the corresponding agency. For example, the Army Corps of Engineers who review and approve the weapons and streams, U S Fish and Wildlife will review the endangered species. The town of Nashville has extensive stormwater ordinance in place that has been reviewed and approved by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Policy. The stormwater ordinance requires that all new developments must meet stringent runoff and treatment standards. The post-development runoff from this site must meet or be less than the pre-development runoff. And therefore, not only is the water clean, the rate at which the post-conduction flows or post-condition flows off the property has to be equal to or less than the current rate. The property is currently located in the WS four watershed, water supply watershed, and would be limited to twenty four percent impervious with curb and gutter and thirty six percent impervious without curb and gutter. And the existing break street, South Side neighborhood does not have curb and gutter streets and would be consistent with thirty six percent impervious allowance. The effects of a new development on property values has long been studied. And the general consensus is that the value of existing homes has less to do with whether a new development is being built and more to do with basic economics of supply and demand. A home's value is a direct correlation between the demand for that specific housing type and the supply in the given area. Therefore, if demand for homes are high, then the values will go up. If the demand is low, then, and the supply is high, then the values will go down. A new well-managed development will always help to maintain current adjacent property values by adding new interest to the area. Therefore, adjacent property values more market related are typically not impacted by new developments. The proposed plan will provide a vegetative buffer along the shared property line with the single family homes along Break Street, as you'll see on the conceptual plan. The proposed rezoning limits the development to a number of units proposed as well as the layout. The conceptual plan has been provided, which will show the developments proposed, how the development is proposed to be laid out. This plan is a guide and is subject to minor tweaks through the design process. It changes to the plan that did not change the overall scope or impact to surrounding properties or anticipated and would not require additional approval from this board. This development would offer a multitude of amenities to include a staff clubhouse, workout room, multipurpose room, computer center, outdoor seating areas, a playground, and picnic shelter complete with tables and grills. The proposed property is shown on the town of Nashville land use plan as high density residential. It's also adjacent to Richardson Court Apartments and Meadow Park Drive, which are both multi-family properties. During the adoption of the land use plan, extensive public hearings were held and strategic thought was put into identifying the specific areas, especially areas of high density. Things like traffic concern, environmental concerns, access to public utilities, stormwater runoff, schools, and harmony with the neighborhood were all considered before adopting the plan. Therefore, the proposed zoning by being consistent with the land use plan has already been scrutinized by both this board and town council and was found to have met those items. I know I've covered a lot of information quickly, so I'll pause here to answer any questions.
There was a buffer made. What type of buffer will it be?
It'd be a vegetative buffer and obviously the town Nashville ordinance specifies how wide and how big that buffer has to be. So ultimately, there will be a buffer between us and the existing single family.
I saw fifty foot on one of our packages. Where'd that come from?
Let me take one minute. Mister Chairman, hold on. Let me get back to my notes.
Send the slides. You familiar with that, Mr. Tony?
We'll, we'll cover some of the PowerPoint presentation. We'll cover that as soon as we're done, if you'll mind.
Okay, that's fine. Other questions?
And I'll be happy to come back if we need more questions.
Total number of units again?
Seventy two is the maximum proposed. It may end up being less, but seventy two will be the maximum.
And I understand this is what you might phrase as the rental client who is professionals?
Ultimately, they have to have income. They've got to pass a background check and credit check. So yes, ultimately there. You're going to be your servant workers, being file department employees, teachers, things like that.
Sean?
Yes, sir.
Question please?
Yes, sir.
The final plan design has to come back for who for approval?
The final plan design, if it's approved for rezoning, it will go to the town T R C team.
The C R C does not come back to us?
No, sir. We're just going to prove the rezoning tonight. If it was a subdivision, then it would come back for you guys.
If you would remain still our public and have any questions?
And how do you mail for the applicant if he would go through his presentation?
The chairman and board, just for the record, Mark McCluskey, one six six Center Street, Jacksonville, North Carolina. On behalf of East Point Homes and Carolina statewide development. Uh, I'm fairly, fairly brief PowerPoint presentation, but uh, Sean uncovered much of that. Great, great summary of the application of proposal and Kevin filled in the gap. So I'll still bring up the presentation. Uh, just kind of quickly review some of these points. Okay, so that's just the next slide. Is it on this?
It might be there right now.
Your screen isn't showing up there anymore, Thomas.
Mister Sears, do you want people to hold questions until afterwards?
After his presentation, listen.
All right.
You think you got it, Thomas?
We got it now. Here we go. We got it now.
Thank you. So I just wanted to kind of point out where the property is located. Like Sean said, it's thirty three, thirty two plus acres. Uh, we're proposing to subdivide eleven acres out for this proposed project. Uh, location, as Sean kind of went over, is off of Break and then South Side Drive. Next slide. So again, the location compared to the current zoning map. Uh, we've got our site, which is A one. Bumped up against multi-family, which are apartments. Uh, O and I, which is a multi-family development down there. The current zoning plan on County, that shows that is multi-family, but I think that maybe it's changed since then. So there is some high density development adjacent to the subject site. Next slide. And Sean has gone through this all already, but the criteria for, for the rezoning, those five steps. Uh, I don't need to, I can't go through them and go to the next slide. Start with number one. Uh, plan consistency. Uh, this is the future land, land use plan and our site there. Located in the area indicating high density development with a density of nine to thirteen units per acre. Next slide. Uh, and then as far as plan consistency, there's a variety of references in the comprehensive plan that uh, indicate uh, the high density zoning considerations, considerations with high density. Parking should be hidden from the right of way. Uh, in a few, a couple of slides, I'll show you what our site layout looks like and you can take into consideration that road landscaping, uh, the building and the parking located behind it. Uh, rooftop amenities probably not applicable to a development like this as there's slow roofs. Uh, workforce housing should be encouraged to provide expanded housing opportunities. This will add up to seventeen units of workforce housing. It's a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms. Uh, I think it's been a while since there's been new multi-family uh, built in Nashville, so this will certainly add some uh, housing choices in the community. Uh, consider visual context, uh, take that into consideration and use a variety of materials uh, in the building. And I have some slides showing some developments that we've built that give you a visual uh, idea of what we, what we do build. Next slide. Uh, in the uh, values, vision, and goal section of the plan, it talks about allowing for more housing choices. Uh, just kind of pointed that out, uh, with the expectation in the future to permit more multi-family. Uh, just made reference and cited those areas of the plan. Next slide. Uh, and then in the implementation strategies of the comprehensive plan, uh, highlighted this area here about having uh, diverse housing choices to attract young professionals who may not be able to afford a, a new single family home. Uh, and, and opportunities to promote uh, workforce housing and that's exactly what our proposal will do. Next slide. Going on to number two, inconsistency. Uh, we've seen no inconsistencies with our proposal in comparison to any of the town's land use plans or zoning ordinance. Uh, is the rezoning request appropriate? I think Sean and Kevin both went, went through that. Uh, in addition to the benefits of having housing choices, uh, we also have ten percent set aside of the units will be fully ADA accessible uh, with lower uh, counter spaces, ladder doors, turning radiuses in the kitchen, bathrooms, roll-in showers, uh, ten percent of those units we set aside uh, dedicated to be fully accessible. Next slide. Uh, adversely affecting uh, property or character of the area. Again, Kevin went over this as far as the being cited in future land use plan. We went through a rigorous planning process before it was adopted. Uh, indicating that high density would be in harmony with surrounding areas and and we'll take that all in the context of our design to ensure that it is in harmony with the, with the neighborhood. Uh, the final step is the accessibility and impact of to public facilities. Uh, at seventy two units, uh, proposed project uh, has public services available and are adequate. Uh, site design includes stormwater column, like Kevin referenced, and new fire hydrants. Uh, we have open space areas, amenities, playgrounds, uh, walkways throughout the property and connecting back to the public right of way. Next slide. And then here's just a couple uh, photos of some projects we've built throughout North Carolina. This top one is in Jacksonville. This one over here is in Brokerson County. Uh, this is in Ashboro and this is the Aiden uh, development. You can see we use a variety of materials, a variety of different designs. Next slide. And a couple more developments throughout North Carolina. Next slide. And here is our conceptual plan. Accessing from South Side Drive will come around. There's a fifty, there's a fifty foot right way right now, which will be extended down to provide access to urban track. Uh, our project will come in. Parking is hidden behind the buildings with some landscaping inside. Uh, here's the buffer area. It turns out to be fifty feet. We certainly can kind of slide everything down to calculate where the required buffer is. We've got some area there. Uh, private amenities include our community building, which will include a multipurpose room, a kitchenette. There's office space for onsite management. Uh, resident computer area. There's also a laundry room uh, connected to the community building, even though each unit will have a washer dryer hookups, just that machines will be uh, provided by residents. So they don't have a machine. They have a, a large laundry area with five washers, five dryers. Also be a mailbox, kiosk area attached to the uh, community building, which will be a covered area to get people out of the weather as they retrieve their mail. And then also attached to be a maintenance workshop for onsite maintenance. Uh, site amenities include a playground, a top lot, a picnic area, and rows of tables. Uh, and at seventy two units here would be the unit mix. So mix of one, two, and three bedroom units. Next slide. And then there's a rendering of what a typical building would look like. Next slide. And those are just uh, unit layouts for one, two, and three bedroom. Get it for the plans. And just to revisit that rezoning criteria, which I think Sean has ran through, Kevin's ran through, and I, Bruce B. Keston, I think we've uh, confirmed that our proposal of rezoning is consistent with those five criteria. Next slide. And that, that wraps it up and I'm available for any questions regarding our proposal or project and what we've done and what we've told you. Any engineering topics that have deferred to Kevin?
Thank you for your presentation.
Mister Chairman, before we get started, they have submitted a video of testimony from some recent child fight they did that they would like to share with the planning board tonight. So if you'd like to, we'd like to share that first, then we'll go into it. This is out of here. This is another one. This is out of the air, this is another one.
I love my balcony and I love my bed. I have an awesome bed. They put a lot of time, a lot of money, and a lot of effort in this place to make everybody feel, you know, right at home. And that's what I like about it, because they think a lot of time and effort in this place, and it's really nice. I mean, it's really nice here. My grandson's school actually is walking, he walks right across the street. And all my doctors and everybody is just like right up one street up. So everything is convenient for me, everything is convenient. The hands go up, boots to the management team, because they really accommodate their tenants here. And, you know, they try to do everything, you know, make everybody like, you know, like family-wise, trying to involve everybody into a lot of activities. So, yeah, it's peaceful and quiet, so I love it over here. I wouldn't see myself in one of them.
Rehabilitation of the Village of Stone Creek was financed by housing credits and investments from the state's Housing Trust Fund and Workforce Housing Loan Program. Receiving plans are Houghton Development and East Door Homes.
So that was a little video clip put together by the state. We were kind of surprised and awarded a project, Ronald Project of the Year in 2018 for the work we did. Acquiring a little property, had fallen into disarray, disrepair, absentee owner. We came in, purchased it, and we have every unit, interior, exterior. Got our management company in there, and it's been a great, great project for us and for the town. Happy to answer any questions.
At this point of our public hearing, I'm going to ask that our citizens that have signed up to speak come forward. Now I'll call your name, and if you would, when you get to the podium, if you can speak into the microphone and tell us where you live. And if you have any statements for the planning board to consider, please. And if you have any questions after you make a statement to us, feel free to ask your question. I'd ask your question, be addressed to us, and we'll get the answer for you. So, Ms., and if I pronounce your name wrong, I apologize. Ms. Outerbridge? And state your full name and your address, please.
Donna Outerbridge, Matt Cleveland, Outerbridge Street, Mattville. My first question is, are we still going to have one exit out? Because we only have one way in when that division was first started. The town of Nashville promised that it would not be a dead-end road, and it's still a dead-end road. So even if you open up South Drive, it's still one way in and one way out. So the power line has failed twice back there by trucks hitting them, i.e. storms or whatever. So therefore, we cannot move.
That is a genuine concern. Randy, can you speak to any plans to take that drive and open it into?
Well, there aren't any plans on for putting another entrance at this time. This development is being proposed to have, leave access to the south at some point in the future if the property in the south develops. But right now, Break Street is the only way in, and it's going to be the only way out.
Okay, it's a fire breakout. Power lines down, we need to build those apartments, and we still can't run it out. Now, when those power lines break down, we end up going through the churchyard only because the police went through that piece. That piece is brought off, blocked off. So the division was first built, the town of Nashville did promise it would be a dead end, it's still a dead end. We actually need another way out.
So did I hear you say is if this development was successful and they go to second phase to the south, it could lead to another attachment, which would be another way?
Well, it can. I mean, the property line's going to be right here. They're going to bring South Side, turn it south, and, you know, end it here. When this property that they're not buying develops and continues south, it'll have access to what is the?
Cardinal Wood.
Cardinal Wood subdivision. I mean, ideally, ideally, we'd like to get an easement through the church's property, through the Mohammed property, and then through. And we can work toward that in the future, but there are no definite plans for that right now.
So that really don't help us any none. You could do that development thirty years from now, we would still have one exit. We still wouldn't be able to move this stuff happening back there, and that's the problem, because it already happened. Matter of fact, the summer of this past summer.
Is that when the power lines down?
Yes, when the eighteen will hit the power line.
You had mentioned that the church in emergency situations in the past has let access through?
They won't dare. I mean, we only followed the police out.
Okay, well, I.
But it's supposed to be allowed.
Right, I understand that. But what we can do is reach out to the fellowship church and see an emergency situation. You know, if Break Street is blocked through here and you can't get out, if traffic could go across their property to the parking lot and then exit out on fifty-eight in an emergency situation. I'd certainly be willing to pursue that.
Still, in the emergency situation, we still don't have the one outlet. You talking about how many people going to be in those seventy-two units? We're already the number of people that's already back there. What we have is down in the bottom, behind the school, is a city unit apartment. Then we already have Richardson Court back there. Then you talking about putting seventy-two unit back there along with all the houses. It's not conducive to one exit.
I hear you, yes.
Okay. We will continue.
Number two, when these are built, with these, he'll bring down our property values in it. Because when Richardson and Court were built in nineteen seventy-four, it bought down the property value of the house back there.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I want everyone to come up to speak.
Please. If you were as professional, what is your opinion on property values?
Yeah, so I cover that really quickly in my little presentation.
Ms. Outerbridge, please go to speak, please stand right there.
So the effects of new developments on properties, as long as we study, the general consensus is that the value of existing homes has less to do with whether a new development is being built and more to do with the basic economics of supply and demand. The home's value is a direct correlation between the demand for that specific type of housing and the supply in the given area. Therefore, if the demand for homes is high, then the values will go up. If the demand is low and supply is high, then the values will go down. A new, well-maintained development will always help to maintain current property values by adding new interest to the area. And therefore, adjacent property values are more market-related and typically not impacted by a new development. And I do want to stress well-maintained and not to take away from any other development that's currently on that street or make any condition to that. But ultimately, I think as you see with the recommendations from adjacent towns, that this developer has well-maintained properties and will continue to maintain this property as well. And I think that has a lot more to do with your concern in the property values than the actual development itself.
Thank you. Ms. Outerbridge, any more comments?
Okay, you mentioned the tax credit for the seventy-two apartments. If you just calm down a little bit, I might didn't get it exactly right.
Yeah, so ultimately, again, these are what they call tax credit apartments. So ultimately, the way it works is you take a conventional development, and the state gives incentives to the developer to cap the rent. So in other words, a conventional apartment right now, that's three bedrooms, may be renting for fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred dollars a month. What this does is the state essentially requires the developer to cap the rent, so he can't go above a certain amount. The state actually dictates that amount, so it's not up to the developer to control it or raise it up or lower it down. So ultimately, that values cap. And what it does is it allows, again, your public servants, singles, to be able to go in and afford an apartment complex. But right now, again, with housing types that would have two hundred dollars per foot for houses, new houses, are selling for four hundred thousand dollars. And so, and the same thing with rent. So if you look at a conventional apartment, the cost of that is really almost outside the current salaries of a lot of our public servants. So this workforce housing allows us to be able to provide a product, a well-maintained, nice product for our public servant, and it caps that rate at a certain.
Yeah, one more question. Your apartment, top of that of the apartments, though, be because we don't want nobody looking in our house.
So that's part of why the buffer's there. So that buffer will be established between us and you. The towns' guide requires what that buffer needs to be, so they're mature trees. So ultimately, at full maturity, they would be thirty-foot-high every tree. So they'd have to be a pine tree, you know, a larger tree, all a lot of different things that will help block that.
I got, Ms. Outerbridge, I've got a question.
Ms. Outerbridge.
How long have you, how long have you been living in that area?
Seventy-seven.
Since seventy-seven, okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'll address the stub issue really quickly. So the way good planning works and the way the town's ordinance is set up, so every development that happens has to stub to the adjacent property. So ultimately, we have all of these large vacant agricultural properties that ultimately, as they develop, they're required to stub to all the vacant properties decided for the very reason that she mentioned there. And so ultimately, this property and this area has developed really slow. And so I think the initial plan was, once this started, it was going to continue to develop out. We skipped and went to the other side of town where Walmart was, and we did more development that way. Now that the development's coming back this way, Cardinal Woods is a good kickoff to that. What you're going to see is it beginning to infill, and so then there will be multiple connections. So again, this property goes off of South Side Drive, which was a stub to this piece of property while it's developed. And so this one will, again, stub to the adjacent property, and that will continue until the properties essentially connect, and then there will be multiple ways to get out. Unfortunately, this is just one that got caught up in a stagnant market where that one section developed, and then we really didn't do anything for a long time. So now that the development started back up, we're going to see more connections and solve some of these problems that we have with interconnected.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If we could just remind members of the general public, there's a three-minute time limit. So we would advise you to answer all of your questions first. And as Mr. Chairman stated, let the town or the representative or town staff answer this. So you make sure you get you a lot of time to get all your questions in.
Thank you. Ms. Janetta Branch? Hope I pronounced it right, Ms. Branch? Sorry, been answered?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Branch. Angela Freeman? Ms. Freeman, if you'd come forth, please. State your name and your address.
Angela Freeman, Thousand Three Brooklyn Boulevard. I just got a, just a few questions. Would there be a manager on this property at all times? And I know you said that it wouldn't be so many cars coming in and out, but I live right there at Meadow Park Apartments, and the cars coming in and out just with those few apartments, and sometimes it sounds like it's on a racetrack. Sometimes they don't stop at stop signs. And from where I stand, us staying is a section of woods right across in front of me. We are starting, having to go out there and pick up trash all where people go through the night. And it's got to come from the apartment because the graveyard is down farther. It stops at the apartment, from our house to the apartment, to their drive. That's where the trash stopped. A lot of it is still in the woods that I can't get in there to get, but a lot of times I try to get it. If the, I know it's a funeral coming along, because I don't want them to have to go there and see all their trash up and down. And like I said, you said there to be certain people that are renting, you're looking for professionals. Is it a guarantee that those will be the only ones renting it? Or you're not going to put a block on anybody that wants to rent it that have a job? So this is just all the questions I have.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. For developers, they spoke, she's asked about, I guess, the type of rent you anticipate.
Sure, let's start with the management. So we will have onsite management. The community building has office space for the manager. A lot of times, we have managers that live on the site and work full-time in the community building. There's also a maintenance staff, and admittedly, trash can be a problem, is a problem. But our manager and maintenance staff, a lot of times, first thing they do in the morning is kind of police the area for garbage and trash. And we have a trash enclosure, which is buffer and screen, and they'll come through and clean up if there is any trash. As far as who can live with us, we hope it's a variety of people. You know, we still have the buy-by-fair housing regulations. And while we have background checks for credit and criminal history, we still need the buy-by-fair housing. So long as they meet our requirements, we're going to certainly have to rent to them. But we can't just say it's just professionals. But most often, we see small families, we see singles, we see seniors, you know, with a mix of one-bedrooms. It does attract older population in those one-bedrooms. So we get a diverse population in most of our developments.
Thank you. Ms. Sandra Whitaker?
Good evening.
Ms. Whitaker.
I live at three oh three South Side Drive.
Yes, ma'am.
And I noticed that, my understanding is that road that you're going to cut to go to the old apartment? And I noticed that when you did your, he said something about a buffer. I did not see a buffer for my house. I'm the only house on that dead end. And I also wanted to know, did he, did you, did they not say this was not Section Eight? Okay, but you said, so how long are you going to have a cap on who can win? And what would happen after that cap is lifted? Secondly, at the end of, right, South Side Drive, there is a school, school pickup place. We have kids down there all the time, and you're hollering, you're saying that we will not have only one in and one out. So we have to take into consideration these kids that are there waiting for the bus to pick these kids up.
Yes, ma'am.
And?
Both valid points.
So that, that's pretty much all I'm going to say.
Ms. Whitaker, I'm going to ask that he come back up and answer your question, so thank you very much for that.
So buffer? Buffer?
Well, you have a cap on the type of rent, and it does a runoff. So, can you pull up that slide that shows the site layout?
Oh, no, not this again.
So as far as a buffer? Hold on just one second. Let's get a slide up so everybody can sit over and discuss. Show this one right here, shows a fifty-foot buffer.
Yes, sir, one last minute.
Yeah, now your screensaver is there, so it's fine.
So while he's looking for that slide, let me ask you, she asked a question about the quality of the type of rent.
She asked a question about the quality of the type of rent you're looking to try to preserve. Is there a cap on that when that expired, you quit booking that type of rent?
So our agreement, which will be a recorded land use restriction, it's going to be a thirty-year affordability component. What happens most often, after fifteen or twenty years, there's an opportunity to apply for rehab credits, which is that little movie clip you saw on Ashboro. After fifteen, twenty years, you can reapply for another round of credits to do a rehab, and that will kick off another thirty years.
Next slide.
So Ms. Whitaker, you said thirty years is their first cap? And you said they would have a chance to pop more credits and renew it for another thirty years?
I'm seeing...
So thirty years is...
So you're saying that...
One more.
It will never go low, I would never go Section Eight.
So I go, I, that is not, organization's an expansion, I'll say the least.
Not a drawing, but a picture.
I don't know. If someone has a Section Eight voucher, they could certainly come live with us. But it's not a project-based Section Eight housing development, which there may be some in Nash County. That's not what this is. This is people who are paying rent, they have a job, and it's... So as far as the buffer... Yeah, fifty-foot right-of-way. A buffer, right now, we're showing, I believe it's a twenty-foot buffer. But if the ordinance required anything additional, it certainly would comply. What's there now is some landscaping, some trees. And if we have a twenty-foot landscape buffer, our first, our first priority would be to preserve the plantings that are there, what's there rather than remove it, and then add to it out to a depth of twenty feet or thirty feet. So preserve what's already planted and growing, that's probably the hardiest stuff right now. And then during construction, we'll install additional plantings to get that twenty-foot or thirty-foot required buffer.
Yeah, her, her house is right here, and faces that way.
So go down to the where the dead end right?
Well, that's a vacant lot right there right now.
She's, yeah, she's right here.
Yeah, you're the last house to the left?
Yes.
Okay. So you've got a lot that's undeveloped and, you know, obviously, there's stuff growing now. We'll do all we can to provide a buffer. If this buffer needs to wrap around and run along the street, we're starting to do that.
There is a street skate requirement, so there is a requirement by tree.
Our intention is to be a good neighbor, we're good neighbors in every community we're working, so we're happy to consult with you and ensure that we take that into consideration.
And I, and I do appreciate that, but one other thing I did want to mention is the kids that live in the project behind us, they're constantly, they cut through my yard to get to wherever they want to go. So therefore, I'm constantly having to have somebody come in to redo grass that gets walked down. So that was mainly my concern with having a buffer or some way to close it off. I don't know, I'll probably end up putting a fence up, but anyway.
I mean, I'm sure we'll end up putting some sidewalks as we, you know, extend South Side Drive, there'll be some walkways, and hopefully pedestrians will choose a smooth walkway over, over your lawn. But I can understand your frustration. As far as the bus stop for the children, you know, we see that in a lot of our developments. Most often, I don't know what the bus route is, if the bus would come up to South Side and come into our development and pick up children there, or if there's a central location where all the children gather. On one development, we've actually put a covered bus stop for the children. You make sure they get out of weather or away from traffic.
Yeah, I think her concern is gathering her children, not at your site, but at an existing site. She's concerned about increased traffic, whatever. So I think you've answered, again, the core question. Chastity Whitaker? Hey, Ms. Whitaker, state your name and address for us.
Chastity Whitaker, three oh three South Side Drive. And most of the questions that I have have been answered today.
Yes, ma'am.
But as a school administrator and living with my mom on the street, I've had an opportunity to, I grew up there, but I've also had an opportunity to, to really look at, at what happens. And like I said, I, I work with railers every day for buses and making sure our kids are safe for buses. And as it stands, the bus, even though that is a two-lane road, it's a very narrow two-lane road. It is such, it is so narrow that the children that my mother spoke about, when they're at the stop at South Side and Break, the bus cannot go down into Richardson Court and come back out because of the way it's built, the bus can't maneuver. But it also can't turn around at that stop. So it has to drive down back in and into South Side and then turn around. And that's just for, in the morning, probably seven or eight kids that are out there going to high school, and probably another seven to ten kids going to middle school. I guess the question that I have, one, is, is that property going to be bus accessible, where the bus can go in and come back out? Because South Side Drive will only accommodate, like, if that bus is on our street, I have to drive over into the neighbor's yard if I'm coming in at the same time the bus is going out. And the other question is going to go back seriously to, to having an outlet. At the point of not being able to get in the road, like, I'm late for work. You're talking about one to two cars per car, per apartment, coming down South Side Drive. My mom is, is a widow, widower? Widow, who will be living by herself with traffic in and out all times of night. And just in good conscience, I know I'm, I'm appealing that there be consideration to opening up additional traffic way because there are lots of elderly folk out there who, who need a way out, and emergency personnel needs to probably be able to get in as well.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Take those considerations also. Ms. Anna Deans? Mr. Chairman, you want me to address the circulation real quick? She asked about the buses internal to the site. So the way that we currently have to design is to handle the Town and Nashville's ladder truck. And so that ladder truck is far larger than any bus. And so ultimately, this site will be able to accommodate that ladder truck for the three-story apartments, and subsequently, we'll be able to handle the buses through the site. They'll be able to turn around and come back out. It may be a better location than where they're currently trying to do that. Okay. That would make sense. Ms. Deans?
And I live at nine twenty-three South Frank Street on the right beside South Side Drive. Now, my question is, and I've had a lot of problems already with that, cars running into my pole in my front yard. I mean, what are we going to do about that because we're going to have additional traffic? So we got the problem with, and it's a short term. I mean, you know, it's, it's really a short term, turning out of South Side. So that's my first problem. Second problem is seventy-two units, I think, is a lot for that neighborhood. Because, you know, we already crowded with Richardson Court over there and the little apartments that they put there in there by W L Green School? In Meadow Park. So, you know, our streets is already a issue, and I have a hard time when somebody hit that pole out there getting it fixed. So...
You're talking about a light pole?
Yes.
Okay.
And the other thing is, I have a problem with the water runoff, you know, the ditches.
Okay.
Is there any way we can look at that?
Our, our town manager's standing right there listening to your concerns, and if I know him, he'll, he'll take note of this. Randy, any comment?
I'm making other.
Okay. Betty Lowe?
I didn't hear her.
Very good. And last, and I'm, I'm not reading this, but it's Lois?
Yes.
Would you like to speak?
She spoke for me.
Okay.
And his outline. We all right there the same.
Is this the pole that ended up the light, the power line being down by chance last summer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No, no.
This is a separate issue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I believe Nancy has a question.
Nancy Westbreak, Nashville Graphic. First of all, if you could pull, well, I don't even need the GIS. That diagram there that shows the wooded area, is there a waterway in there? Is the first question. Secondly, is any of this being actively farmed? I can't really tell from the GIS. Third, you know, I'm just trying to fit them all in the three minutes. Is there an idea about what the rental rates would be for the one, two, and three-bedroom apartments? And last, what is that light blue thing on the bottom left?
I'll start with the easy one. Light blue, polygram, is this a representation of where the stormwater pond will be located? And there is, I don't know if it's a waterway, I think it's a ditch or a branch that runs down there. Drainage, drainage.
There is drainage through that area.
And it's not going to be standing?
It will not be standard. That's why we show that area in green, that dark green area is an area we're not touching.
It's all wooded?
It's partially wooded now, and then going in.
That's a pretty accurate description. The light green, it is upland field. As far as being actively farmed, I don't know if it was farmed last year, but the year before, there is some remnants of beans out there. So I think it has been farmed. And, and that break point between the two greens is pretty close to where the true mine is. So that will all remain undeveloped. Our improvements will be on the high side of the site, where drainage is going down towards the ranch. Okay, the red structure? Starting on the low end for a one-bedroom, will start at three hundred and six dollars. And that will include water sewer and trash pickup. And the high end, we arrange up to thirteen hundred dollars for a three-bedroom, two-bath, which also include water sewer and trash. And then in between, there's a variety of rents based on band of income. And the income requirements will vary from fifteen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars for a single person for a one-bedroom, up to sixty-eight thousand, eighty dollars for a family, four children, and then kind of in between that range.
So when you say fifteen thousand for a single person, this means that person has to make that much a year?
That's a minimum.
A minimum.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well... And that's, that's a minimum to be able to afford three hundred and six dollars a month rent?
Okay. I haven't known much. Sign of this time, I'm going to ask the board to ask questions of our developer or Sean, or any of the questions you have for the public that has come out of concern. So, board, you have any questions?
Does anybody have any idea what the population is down there now? Down South Side, Richardson Court, Break Street area?
Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the appropriate actions to close the hearing and then ask the question, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. No further secretaries, as to be sweet, I close the public hearing this time, and now we'll go back to the board for questions.
So no, I mean, no one has an idea about the current population down there?
Mr. Thomas, what you done, I think, right now, Richardson Square, when I did the math, and let me go back to the GIS, sir. You have four... You got roughly forty-eight units out there at Richardson Square. We can't give an estimate total of how many people in a unit. But if you just say normal family size is four, and this is just application of numbers, because this is not factual, it could be one person living in one unit, but if you just say forty-eight times four, one hundred ninety-two residents, that's just an estimate, but nothing factual. Because it could be two people living in one unit, one person living in a unit, but that's how we would do it for normal family.
So basically, the population, what's its units? The units there are complete will don't, the population will don't.
Yes, sir, but if you look at, like we said, without having a fast number of how many people live in Richardson Court, we wouldn't be able to give a determination of that. But of course, what you do with development, they are going to be written, one bedrooms, two, three bedrooms, but then a family of one to three to four, maybe five or six, so it can double.
Other questions to the board?
You said the drainage is going to come from the high side, come down towards the drainage, and go back to the ditch at that rate?
Correct. So there's, there's an existing draw drainage that is to the left of the plane as you looked at it. That will stay in place, and then ultimately, all of our drainage will drain from the neighborhood to the back of our site and discharge to that same drainage going to the south. So none of our drainage will go into the existing neighborhood.
Sean, I guess my question is for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So it is not a requirement that there be a traffic study done before we move forward?
No, not on this type of development due to the impact of it.
So they're thinking is that there is minimal impact?
Right, yes, ma'am, for what I asked.
And this does fall exactly in line with the 2021 conference plan?
Yes, sir, it does.
The comprehensive plan for the town?
Yes, sir, it has a slater as high intensity.
Any more comments? Sean, go back to you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation for this one would be to approve the rezoning due to the African developer have beaten the Town and Asheville's ordinance for rezoning with the development. They have met everything we had asked, so I would say approval for this. But I will yield back to you and the board for deliberation discussion to make a decision, sir. Pending that, they accept the development conditions also in that approval, sir, for me.
So this is just one part of a process?
Correct.
Lease development, this isn't. Can I say this for the eight people that spoke or represent here, this is just one phase. It's not a final say, it's just a process that leads us to whether we get there or not, correct?
That is correct, sir. And there will be an additional public hearing that you got on your letters on the night for the town council, which will be March the fourth. So we will also have another public hearing that night pending the decision was made tonight at seven PM.
So at this point, board has three options, that's to approve, deny, approve with conditions. What's the desire of the board?
I believe that, uh, or table, or we do have the option to table for further study. Approve with conditions.
Okay.
And that condition being that, um, that there'd be more than one, one way in and out.
Now, I believe, I believe you want to heard their landlord manage to get into another subdivision, which is not their property at this point. Is that correct statement, Mr. Gordon?
Yes, sir, we're still into the maximum extent that we can still. So we're still into the adjacent property for anticipation or future connection. So at this point, we can't do any more than we've done, but we are extending as far as we can go.
But it will be stubbed or set to be stubbed, so when the next development site comes along, it connects and can.
Connect to Cardinal Woods, that's correct.
To Cardinal Woods, which is already there and already has a stub going that way, because I saw it last week.
That's correct.
There's actually two stubs north, I believe.
It is. And if additional development happens, again, we get a connection through the school property to that, uh, other vacant property against the back of Glover Park, that could also stub to us as well. So as long as we're stubbing that direction, we're doing as much as we can to promote that and be able to extend that in the future.
So as the development said, there would be a stub there for future advancement to have a second area out of this.
Correct.
So it's out.
Actually, I think they might be better off just having one way in, one way out for now, instead of, uh, having additional traffic coming from like Cardinal Woods over to, to there. So if they, they may be that the neighbors there now could be better off, probably better off. The way it is now, the.
I think they're.
Thinking out loud here.
Yeah. I think they're going to have to do a stub. I give a quick rep.
Town ordinance promotes that, and you would want to promote that for interconnectivity. Again, as the town grows out and develops, you want as many connections as you can get. And that does help disperse the traffic. Now, again, if you had a direct access and it was easier to come through the view from Cardinal Woods to PPA, then your concern would be valid. But I think even with Cardinal Woods, you would head out to the major primary road and hit PPA to come back in town. But if there was a, a rec or PPA, this would be a great option to develop a route around a rec or a condition that activated. So that's why we want all this interconnectivity and why the ordinance provides that stuff.
Or power lines there, or power line there.
I can't see, I can't see the connection to Cardinal Woods. I mean, I, I can't see it being advantaged, one way or the other, traffic wise. It just wouldn't be of a damage. I'm like you, I have concerns about not having another access.
And they, I mean, and they do have a way out.
Right.
In, in, in the event of an emergency going through the, the church's property.
And Randy said he would, he would look at that, and I think that's appropriate. So you want to amend your motion?
Oh, yeah, I, I'll amend it, I'll, to approve.
So he's making a mo, a motion to approve without conditions as the ordinance is written here?
Mr. Chairman.
Is there any more conversation, sir?
We will have to approve it with the development conditions. There was a.
Yes, yes. Yes, I said as written, and I'll read those seconds.
Thanks, sir.
Is there a second?
I second, and the reason I'm seconding it, I want everybody to be clear, we are approving the rezoning. So I want that to be clear. We're not approving moving forward, we're re, we are approving the rezoning. So just hear me, okay?
So, the motion is to move that the town of Nashville Planning Board recommends approval of conditional zoning request CZNR 2020-502 for rezonings of specified property to CZNR, Conditional Zoning Residential Zoning District, with the developed conditions one through five, and forward this approval to the town of Nashville's Town Council. The subject property shall be, this is one through five, one, this town property. The subject property shall be developed in accordance to the approved site plan for all applicable requirements of the town of Nashville zoning ordinances and additional standards in section L9. Two, the subject property may be developed for the use permitted in R6, high density residential district, in accordance with the standard requirements and procedures established for that district by the town of Nashville zoning ordinances. Three, prior to construction of the proposed site, the developer shall obtain the following additional permits. A, Town Nashville zoning permit. B, commercial building permits and commercial trade permits. C, Town of Nashville driveway permit. D, any other applicable permits that may be required for this site development with approval from Nash County Planning and Building Inspections. Four, the developer must use recommended tight buffer screening recommended by the Town of Nashville zoning ordinance for the required use. Five, significant or substantial modifications or revisions to the approved design of the site plan may require additional review by the Town of Nashville Technical Review Committee and the Town of Nashville Planning Board, as well as pre, re, reapproval, not pre, reapproval by the Town of Nashville Town Council at discretion of the planning director who has designated. The conditional zoning map amendment shall be invalid unless and until the petitioners can send in writing to all the attached development conditions. Statement of plan consistency and reason, CZR, CD, ZDR 2020-501 is consistent with the recommendations of the 2021 Town of Nashville Land Use Plan because the subject property is located in a residential zoning district and permitted uses for what the applicant is asking for are allowed in both the zoning districts since public water and sewer is available to these sites. And two, reasonable in the public interest and not spot zoning because the subject property is immediately adjacent to residential lands already existing in the Town of Nashville where these uses are allowed. Is that your motion, Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Is that your second, Ms. Lewis? Motion been made, seconding it, I call the motion to question, those who are prepared to say aye? Any opposed? If passed, you're unanimous. Sean, your next one.
Yes, sir, thank you once again, Mr. Chairman. Our last actual item is conditional zoning, CZNR 2005-01. Conditional zoning, the 723 Barn Street and 1.1 acres of the trail from I-1 to CZNR, conditional rezoning, non-residential zoning.
Well, Sean's bringing it down more, so I'll put you on speakerphone and take you up to the podium, and you can listen along. All right?
Mr. Chairman, one second, please, let everybody clear out. Yes.
All right, I'm going to put you on speakerphone, Michael. Our next applicant, God. He could have been here by now if he would have left when he said.
Mr. Hurd.
Yeah, Michael, you want to announce yourself?
Yeah, this is, this is Michael Hurd with Hurd LLC. Um, I've been submitting that some zoning favoritism for the junction side, but I have also towards our mother.
Go ahead, Sean.
Mr. Chairman, as we stated, Mr. Hurd submitted this application back around February the 25th. We had already had a discussion with Mr. Hurd back in January about the conditional rezoning request. He's asking to rezone this property from industrial I-1 to conditional zoning non-residential CZNR. The current land use is industrial one. I propose future land use as displayed as neighborhood services. Of course, Mr. Hurd has just introduced himself as Hurd LLC, Mr. Michael Hurd. If you look into your packets on page three of his application, describe how the conditional zoning request is consistent with the Town of Nashville Comprehensive Plan, zoning orders, and all other official plans that is applicable. He will afford us with the, it will afford us with the opportunity to provide opportunities to businesses in a community creating economical growth, development, and redevelopment. Explain how the conditional zoning request will update existing orders. If there is any inconsistency with the Town of Nashville Comprehensive Plan, zoning orders, and any other official plan that is applicable is consistent with the plan. Explain why conditional zoning requests will be appropriate, beneficial, and in the general public interest of the area sought to be rezoned, providing businesses to the community, wants in the downtown district. Explain whether the conditional zoning requests would affect adjoining property owners and alter the character of the area. It's as if it would not. Briefly explain the accessibility, impact, adequate public facilities, service, fire and safety, infrastructure, parcel recreation, stormwater drainage, and topography, et cetera, that is currently available on the subject property. Nothing has changed since during the redevelopment of the junction when they repurposed it with a change of use. Mr. Chairman, if you look in your packets, board, as we stated earlier, this is rezoning CZ 2005 CZNR 01. The applicant is Mr. Hurd, Michael Hurd for Hurd LLC. He is the property owner and applicant. He has requested the property 723 Barn Street and the parking lot area with the address of 2078 West Cross Street be rezoned from I-1 Industrial One to CZNR, conditional zoning non-residential for compatibility with the developer's intent of mixed commercial use. The property has parcel number 345050, 345049. This property is in the Town of Nashville Corporate Limits, and the property is in the Town of Nashville Downtown Municipal Service District, MSD District. If you look north of the property, it's V2, a parking lot, and a shopping center, we'll pull it up with one bit on the map. I-1 is residential baking lot. East of it is O&amp;I, residential industrial. West is IR and R10, baking land residential. Existing zone for I-1, I-1 District is defined as a certain land so situated as to be suitable for industrial development usually along railroad siding and major thoroughfares, but where certain operations could adversely affect nearby properties. The purpose of this is to permit the normal operation of almost all industrial except those that be detrimental to adjoining properties excluded from this district. Of those industries which are noxious by their emission of smoke, dust, fumes and glare, noise and vibration, and those industries which deal primarily in hazardous products such as explosives. Selected business uses are also appropriate in this district. Now CZNR, I feel like we are very more compatible with this one since we've been doing this one more than our CZDR residential. But the non-residential conditional zone district is district assigned with specific permitted use as detailed within the ordinance authorized by North Carolina General Statute 160D 703. The imposing of mutual agreed upon individual development conditions are allowed as part of the legislative rezoning process. The CZNR district is to provide a unified non-residential development, which may include residential compounds that accomplish the purpose applicable regulations to equivalent of a higher degree that where such regulations are intended to control development on individual lots and promote economic and efficient land use. The NR CZ district is intended to be used for the purpose of body development to detail site plans for a list of specific conditions that should compatibility with the harmony and surrounding area. You've traveled to page two. The 2021 Nashville Comp Plan has this existing industrial. The purpose of industrial classification is to provide a wide variety of general manufacturing, assembling, and warehousing land use. The planned industrial part as well as a freestanding manufacturing establishment are included within the industrial classification. Some intensive business services uses such automotive and miscellaneous repair service could also be appropriate use within this classification, including this classification of lands. Areas are currently used for industrial purposes as well as areas where future industrial land use is anticipated. Prefer re, prefer uses research facility, logistics distribution facility, commercial and industrial operations, and government facilities. What the applicant has asked for, because of course with conditional zoning, you got to ask for the uses that you want in that district where we designated. The applicant has asked for a farmers market, produce sale, retail, far as retail and general sale with stores, and all different type varieties of retail, a processing facility, a banquet hall, a club or a lodge, a community center, a museum, meeting facility, a conference center, a place of worship, a theater indoor or outdoor, a convenience store, a bus passenger shelter, transportation terminal passenger only, a school, all general, in general, all uses in general, pretty much vocational, high school, middle school, elementary, community college, manufacturing, assembly, processing, and distribution, distilleries, a brewery, a cigar shop, a winery, a leather outlaw product manufacturing, a veterinary clinic, veterinary hospital, office and financial services, a building trade office without outdoor storage, a recreational facility indoor and outdoor, health and personal care facility, body arts, tattoo, body piercing shop, eating and drinking establishments, a licensed massage parlor, and a taxidermy. And all these uses are allowed in our CZNR zoning district. The applicant did submit the reasons why some of these uses that's kind of a little what we would say you wouldn't see in this type of business use why he's requesting them. First of all, for the leather outlaw product manufacturing, Hurd LLC has a prospective western wear store tenant who makes custom leather pocketbooks and other leather items. Even though this would be considered a retail use, Mr. Hurd wants to ensure that this business will be able to be a manufacturer in his signature leather products moving forward. A place of worship, Hurd LLC has a prospective tenant that will be using the site building to host religious events on the property. This would comply with meeting facilities and conference centers. He wants to be able to allow the future tenant the chance to be open on other hours throughout the week and the weekends. Manufacturing use, Hurd LLC has a prospective tenant that makes a retail, among other things, homemade grits from scratch to sell in supermarket. Hurd LLC has a prospective tenant from Raleigh who's looking at assembling and customizing firearms and selling them. For this tenant to do operate and do this type of business, the ATL requires a tenant to be in the area zone for manufacturing use. Same thing for the person who does retail sales with making homemade grits. It requires them to have that type of use. School, Mr. Hurd is also working with Nashville Public Schools and Nashville Community Colleges to use one of the Nashville Junction sites as a satellite school site for continuing education classes and day and night classes for educational purposes. These other uses are allowed within industrial zone district and our CZNR district. I think we already been over the description of the subject property, it is the Nashville Junction and the parking lot. We have a picture showing it's I-1. If you flip over to page four, you have a picture showing where this property is slated to be industrial, which we do have it. And the property industry is Hurd LLC, its advocate requests to rezone approximately 2.82 acres at the above said location. Rezoned application received on February the 5th. The public hearing, public hearing notice letters were mailed out to approximately 53 properties within a 500-foot radius on February the 5th. The public hearing notice was posted on the town's website on February the 7th. The rezoning sign was posted on the property February 5th, folks were taking it at the end of the packet. The legal notice was advertised in Nashville Rapid on February the 13th, 20th, and 27th. And the planning board meeting scheduled for February 25th and town council March 4th, 2025, meeting if the planning board reaches a decision for or against the rezoning of this property. The front door town hall was posted on February the 5th. The front door to the Taralde Cool Library is posted on February the 7th. The subject property is not located within the flood plain. The subject property is not in Stony Creek watershed or Upper Stony Creek sub watershed. The subject property is not located within NCDQ water supply watershed. The property will be provided by water and sewer through the Town of Nashville. Mr. Chairman, I think that is enough for me this evening. As always, the planning board knows their requirements and what they have to do for rezoning. And we will say consistent with the Commonwealth of Land Use Plan, the conditional rezoning CZNR 2005-01 is consistent with the 2021 Town Nashville Comprehensive Plan for conditional non-residential because, one, the Nashville Junction is within the industrial zoning district. Two, this development is in harmony with other industrial uses within the district. Three, the Nashville Junction was made to allow mixed uses of business houses under one umbrella. Reasonable and not spot zoning, CZNR 2005-01 may be considered reasonable and in the public's interest and not spot zoning because such property is located within the industrial district and will continue to be zoned for industrial proximity adjacent properties around it under conditional non-residential. The Town of Nashville definition of non-residential conditional district is to provide for a unified non-residential development, which may include residential components that accomplish the purpose of the applicable regulation to equivalent of a higher degree that where such regulations are intended to control development on individual lots and to promote economical and effective land use and improve levels of amenity appropriate and harmless varieties, create, design, and better environments. And as always, sir, the TRCT has not met on this. We met during the pretty much changing use of the Nashville Junction. We do have some development conditions, Mr. Chairman, and then I will yield to you, sir. Development condition number one, the subject property shall be developed in accordance with approved site plan that applicable requirements of the. Development condition number one, the search property shall be developed in accordance with approved site plan and applicable requirements of the town national zone orders and used for the following, a farmer's market produce sale, retail land use, processing facility, banquet hall, club or lodge, community center, museum, meeting facility, conference center, place of worship, theater indoor, outdoor, convenience store, bus passenger shelter, transportation or terminal passenger only, school all use in general, manufacturing, assembly, process and distribution, distilleries, breweries, a cigar shop, winery, leather and outlaw product made veteran, veterinary clinic and hospital for veterinary, office and financial services, building trade office without outdoor storage, recreational facility indoor and outdoor, health and personal care facility, body arts tattoo body piercing shop, eating and drinking establishments, licensed massage parlor and taxidermy. Any new uses must come back before the town Nashville planning board and the town council for amendment of this and will be approved by a vote by vote. Significant substantial modifications or revision to the approved site plan may require disreview by the town Nashville Technical Review Committee and the town Nashville Planning Board as well as reapproved by the town Nashville Town Council at discretion of the planning director on his designated need. Number three, the advocate must survive by section twenty four point four noise where it states unreasonable loud noise or disturbing noise shall not be allowed between hours of ten P M and six A M that is in the town of Nashville general ordinance. And the conditional zoning amendment shall be invalid unless and until the fractionary's consent and writing all the attached development conditions. Mister Chairman, I will yield back to you, sir, for the public hearing. We have Mister Hurt here on the phone this evening to discuss to the board and answer any questions, sir.
Thank you. Public hearing. RZ twenty twenty five CNR two five twenty five. And if I'm understanding correctly, Mister Lucas, every, every individual thing he wants to do, there has to be approved.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um. Having no one signed up for the public hearing unless there's somebody, but I'm not seeing a wish to speak. Close the public hearing. I will this time, uh. Counsel take a minute to read this, uh. Since Mister Hurt is not here.
We got him by phone.
But I mean, she's not here in person, I, I'd like to ask something.
Yes, sir.
Um. There's a lot of different uses requested here.
Yes, sir.
And, and Mister Hurt, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I really like what you're doing in Nashville. I have great appreciation for your plans and everything. And I realize this building not being full is not your idea of conducting business. But and correct me if I'm wrong, when this first became to counsel. Counsel was told that this would be family use, dining, drinking, uh, those type of uses. And now I'm seeing a lot of things on here that are way far from that. And I believe there's a lawyer, a real estate company. And again, I'm seeing us getting away from what counsel originally vision was told about large family use, drinking, dining, smoking, that type of thing. And, and I'm wondering, would be better served with this long list of having Mister Hurt here in person to help us understand his vision before he pushes back the council. And again, I, I'm just one person up here and there's, there's five of us. But again, I'm wondering, would be well served unless Mister Hurt says he'd suffer a hardship to table this, let him be here in front of us and maybe even reconsider after my comments, maybe revise his list. Because it's pretty broad and I think it's getting away from what counsel was originally told. Now again, that's my recollection. And I don't want to cause my hardship, but if this is in agreement with all up here and, and he agrees, that would be my comment to Mister Hurt.
Michael, did you, did you hear what the chairman said?
I mean, I don't know if they can hear you or not, Randy. Um. You know, there's been a lot of different things that's been discussed about what could go into the building. The, the purpose of the building was to, you know, obviously revitalize the historical landmark in town and, you know, to create economic growth and development in the community. And, and yes, we've talked about a lot of different businesses that could or could not be in that facility. Um, and I mean, you know, we are trying to move forward with it. I'm not there, so I understand, uh, the, the. If the planning board wants to table it, I, I'm not gonna, you know, argue that point. Um. You know, basically industrial, you know, I one, when we look through what could go in a facility here. I mean, we are going to have restaurants, we are going to have businesses that serve alcohol. Uh, but we also want to, you know, we don't want to cut our nose off despite our face. We want to be able to have, you know, different kinds of retail and different kind of businesses in there that's going to accommodate the other businesses that are going to be there. We don't just want to have, you know, a bunch of alcohol businesses that's going to be there serving. Um, the intent is to have a mixed use development that can cater to a number of different businesses. Um, you know, one of the things that was mentioned is educational, you know, to, to have a restaurant at a facility, but then also across the hall to have a, a satellite learning, uh, you know, uh, location. I, I think is a great wonderful thing, particularly if you're working with the community college. Um, you know, to be able to talk about real estate or, um, you know, maybe public works or, or different, you know, things that I'm involved in, whether it be construction or, you know, utilities, just different kinds of educational classes. I think that would be a good use of the facility. Um, and when you really go through the, the I one, there's a lot of things that could contribute to economic growth and development that would fit well there. Like we were talking about the leather shop earlier. Um, you know, that's something that, uh, I do have relationships with that, that are people that are in that industry. And I mean, the, the broader brush is there's a lot of things that that property is already approved for. And so we want to, you know, include some of those things in this rezoning that we're requesting. Um, that, that could potentially be in that building as well and not, not try to limit ourselves. Um. You know, we've got the building right now about fifty percent leased, uh, fifty percent spoken for. And, and you know, we are looking to get additional tenants in there and we will. I mean, it's going to fill up. I don't know what those tenants are going to be. And, you know, we, we've, I've had that building leased probably twice now since we started this process and it's taken a lot longer than what we thought about or what we had taken into consideration when we first got started. Particularly going through the National Park Service and getting it on the historical registry and, and having that National Park Service, uh, certification. But, um, you know, I, I don't know what we're going to be putting in that building. What I do know is that, you know, we're going to do something that's going to be a good fit for the community. And I think a lot of those things that we've talked about that's in that rezoning, um, you know, could have or would have a positive contribution, uh, you know, not only to us, but to the community. I mean, we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna have ten bars in a, in a thirteen unit building. You know, we're not going to oversaturate it. I think a lot of the stuff that the mills has done is great for Rocky Mount. But you can, you can really oversaturate a building if you have a lot of, you know, entertainment places throughout that facility. So. I mean, at the end of the day, I think that, I mean, is, is, is there anything in particular that the planning board is looking at that they would take exception to? Or, or things that may be concerning that you're reading that, that maybe wouldn't be a good fit?
Well, well, I'll say I'm, I'm impressed with how well we're able to hear you and, and have this conversation. So this may go better than I thought, uh.
Well, I mean, I, Mister Chairman, I mean, for me, I think the suggested motion here kind of covers what you're seeing. Um, and number one, it very is says any new uses must come back before the town national planning board and town council for amendment where an approved vote will be needed. So I kind of wonder if that kind of, I'd say covers what your concern is, but I, I, I agree that it is much different than what I remember real, from what I remember from past vote. Uh, but, um, I wonder if that, that would not cover the circumstances.
So. Would we wish to go through here and maybe limit some of these or not? Knowing that Mister Hurt, if he ends up with a client, can come back to us and say, here's how this client's going to operate. I'm asking you to come back and reconsider this. Whatever. I don't want.
Because I, I think what I'm here, what I'm hearing it as I understand it is that there are many things that are included in that settlement like that for that use for that particular. So to be to have him to, you know, offer specifics, you know, specificity tonight, I think would be tough because he doesn't know at this structure, like who, who this potential tenant is going to be. But if it's outside of anything that's aligned in here, we would ask them to come back and bring.
And, and this is pretty broad to give him that lab too.
Yes, sir, that's correct. And anything with retail would not have to come back before you guys, we can classify it as a retail business. That retail would catch all of that for him.
Gotcha.
So if he decides to change and get a different store, we wouldn't have to keep coming back for you guys.
Is, is there anything on here that anybody has thought about? And, and my only one is that slares out at me is bus passenger shelter and a terminal passenger area. I just don't know what that's.
And, and I could chime in on that because the only thing I'm thinking about, okay. What if there's a, a, a bus stop that's coming through town or, or, you know, if there's a transit system eventually at some point. One thing that they're telling in white force is they've got the S line coming through. You know, they're going to be looking a place where, you know, buses can stop. And it was, it was more or less just kind of thinking down the road, hey, could this be a possibility? Uh, obviously I'm not, we, we're not going to have a Greyhound train posting up outside, but you know, maybe, maybe, I mean, who knows, maybe the town works out something and there's a transit system in town. And we have a unit that, that may fit for that use. And I mean, that was actually a conversation that me, Sean or Randy had where, hey, look, do we want to include this at this time? And, you know, me on the side of just saying, well, look, let's just go ahead and include it now. It's already approved through the I one. Let's just leave it on. And I mean, if it, if it comes to fruition, great. If it doesn't, I mean, I mean, we're, we're, my mission is to get this thing leased up in the next two to three months anyway. And with the momentum that we have, we're moving so fast and we're getting good tenants. Um, you know, timing is going to be important as well. So, um, that was just one of the reasons why we kept it on there. Just, you know, ten years down the road, if this, if this was a need, then we could potentially provide it.
Any other comments from the board? Mister Harper? Miss Stevens? Miss Lewis? Ed? Yes.
Can I?
Absolutely. You of all people, yes.
Excellent.
Nancy Westbreak, National Graphic, um.
Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, Michael, you said that your intent, your mission was to get this leased up within the next two to three months. Does that mean that you anticipate all the tenants basically having a grand opening at the same time?
Not necessarily. We have a, uh, we actually have a hair salon studio glam they're opening up on March the fourth.
Is that the first one?
Yeah, she's the first one. Um. So I actually gave her, uh, uh, y'all's contact information. She should be reaching out hopefully to do a, a ribbon cutting, actually.
Oh, cool. And then my other question was, at some point, I think you've mentioned thirteen units. Is that physically the biggest number of units that you will have or is that number not set?
I mean, the, the way that the building was designed, we can, you know, self divide units and, and do some different things. Obviously we have to go through, you know, the, um, Nash County Inspection Department. We'd have to, if we were to change the, the unit layout, we'd have to get, you know, zoning approval as well. But, um, currently it's set up for thirteen units. So there, the average, um, it was twelve, we were able to get, we ended up going thirteen. The average unit square footage is about twelve hundred and fifty square feet. So that's, I mean, it's nineteen thousand square feet. That's as, you know, that's about the best we could do with the common area and the bathroom and everything that we have there.
Cool, thanks, that's it.
I'll say that too. Based on.
Think we lost our.
I think we did too.
The mic's still working or not?
I don't know, again.
They got a two hour time, my good folks.
Well, finally get us out here early. Uh. I'll, I'll take back my comments. I am, uh, I did not realize communications was going to be as good as it is. There it is.
Slam the door, that's one way to do it.
He found the time. I, I did not realize we're going to be able to communicate with Mister Hurt as well as we are. And so I, I'll take back my comment about tabling this. I thought that was going to be an impediment. Randy, you've done a good job of helping us understand. So with, with that said, uh, what is desires of the board? And is there desire for any limitations?
Mister Chairman, I mean, I'll make the motion we approve based on the suggested motion here in the packet. Motion to recommend approval before the zoning amendment.
Some motions approved as written, including the I request is written. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I have a second.
I'll second that.
There's a second on the floor for Mister Harper, do I hear? And I'll go through it. The motion is written. It's the move that the town, that town of Nashville Planning Board recommends approval. Conditional zoning request CZ twenty five NR O one to rezonate specified property CZ NR conditional zoning non residential along with developmental conditions for the use of, and the list is in front of you. I need to read it again.
No, sir, not for the record.
Very good.
Thanks, sir.
And ending with along with the statement plan consistency and reasonable below and subject to the following development condition recommended for construction considerations given of the town Nashville Town Council. One, the subject property development according to approval site plan of all adequate requirements of town national zone ordinance and for uses the following uses. And there in front of you is previously read twice, ending with the word taxidermy. And then in bold, any new uses must come back before the town of Nashville Planning Board and Town Council for an amendment where an approved approval vote will be needed. Two, significant substantial modification revisions to the approved site plan may require disreview by the town of National Technical Review Committee and the town of Nashville Planning Board as well as reapproval by the town Nashville Town Council at discretion of the planning director's designated need. Three, the advocate must abide by section twenty four point four noise where it states unreasonable loud noise or disturbing noise should not be allowed between hours of ten P M and six A M. And four, the conditional zoning map amendment shall be invalid unless and until the petitioner cons- consent in writing to all attached developmental conditions. Statement of plan consistency and reasonable CZ twenty twenty five NR O one is consistent with recommendations of the twenty twenty one town of Nashville land use plan because such property is located in industrial zoning district and the permitted uses of what the applicant's asking for are allowed in both zoning district since public water sewers available at these sites. Two, reasonable in the public interest and not spot zoning because such property is immediately adjacent to office and institutional tracts of land or existing in the town of Nashville where these uses are allowed and such properties within municipal district downtown. That is the motion as it's on the table. All those in favor?
I.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Mister Hurt, we thank you for your time. Appreciate what you've, uh, been doing here in the town of Nashville.
Thank you very much, Mister Lucas. Thank you for putting together that great presentation. Randy, thank you for everything. Counsel, thank you again, planning board. And, uh, apologize about not being there tonight, but, um, I'm thankful that we was able to get across the finish line. So I'm looking forward, I'll be at the council meeting now.
Any other business for the town's planning board?
Mister Chairman, we do not have nothing to say to announce for the next meeting, which right now stands as an as needed meeting. We have not had anything brought before the town council, but let's plan to meet that night because we will have a rezoning that will be applied by, they already started doing the paperwork today. And that is for the Nash Arts, Nash Senior Center.
You're limited to two.
Yes, sir.
No, sir, we're glad to have the business, we really are. Uh, anything else? Like entertaining motion to adjourn? Like entertaining motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Mister Harper's made a motion. Mister Thomas is second. We, we are adjourned.